Hi, good evening. My name is Karen Bernaskin. I chair the Monroe Conservation and Water Resources Commission. It is 6:32 on Thursday, May 13th, and I would like to call the meeting of the Conservation Commission to order. Before we begin, I would like to confirm those in attendance. When I say your name, please indicate by saying that you are there. Barbara Thomas.
Here.
Ryan Driscoll.
Here.
Samantha Spino.
Here.
And I believe we also have with us Kat Zanenko from the First Selectman's Office?
Correct.
Perfect. Well, we do have a quorum, and I called this meeting to order. Here we go again. This is the famous script. This meeting is being done, conducted remotely in compliance with Section 1 of Governor Lamont's Executive Order 78, dated March 14, 2020, using GoToMeeting electronic formula. And the agenda for this meeting has been placed on the Monroe website. Using this technology, the public shall participate in real time in this meeting via computer tablet, smartphone, or telephone using the access information being set forth. I notice this, and I'm going to skip this. We are not going to get 250 people, but if we do, the meeting would be canceled and be scheduled for another time. But I would like the recording to take note of the following regarding this remote electronic meeting. This meeting is being conducted in real time. This meeting is open to the public. Any member of the public may listen or view this meeting anonymously. That this meeting is being recorded. And while we ask you to mute your microphone unless recognized to speak, that anything you say or do, or is displayed on your screen, may become part of the recording. That the recording shall be posted to the town's website within seven days, and that the recording shall be made available to the public within a reasonable time in Town Hall. The meeting follows standard parliamentary procedures. Special rules: Please mute your microphone so as to reduce background noise at any time you are not speaking. Prior to speaking on each occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. And the use of the chat feature is prohibited and will not be considered during this meeting. As set forth in the agenda, this meeting will have public participation. However, I have not received any written comments from the public between the date the agenda was posted and an hour before this meeting started. With that being said, is there any member of the public who would like to speak? Okay, thank you. We're going to move right on the agenda to item number four, which is announcements and correspondence. We did receive, and the reason this is listed is it was received after our last meeting, the Arbor Day celebration that was held on April 30th, P&amp;Z information in the subdivision of 32 Cottage Street and 42 Sandbar Road. Barbara had sent around the release, the news release from the Newtown Conservation Commission on the use of native plants. She also forwarded the trouble Conservation Commission's request for funding and also copies of the draft Pollinator Pathway Generic brochure and the pesticide brochure. Did any of you receive any other communications that you would like to note?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to add that since our last meeting, the planning department clerk had resigned, this is Georgia Cantwell, that she has been replaced, and Georgia moved to Vermont. Her replacement, her new replacement starts as of Monday, that the Town Hall staff is currently interviewing to fill the position of planning administrator and hopes to have something, have a person onboard in the near future. And as was noted at last night's Inland Wetlands Commission meeting, the inland wetland agent Denise Halsted is leaving and moving to Florida. So lots of, there's many changes in the Town Hall, and not necessarily related to what we do, but the library director, Lorna Reins, is also leaving and moving to a directorship of the New Milford Library. On that note, the next item is the approval of the minutes of the April 8th meeting. Is there a motion?
This is Barbara. Make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 8th meeting.
Is there a second?
Ryan, no second.
Okay, it's a motion by Thomas, second by Driscoll, to approve the minutes of the April 8th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? All those in favor? Thomas?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. No, Spino?
Yes.
And Bernaskin, they passed 4-0. Now, moving right along to updates, board and commission updates. I'd first like to say that Samantha has volunteered to check into planning and zoning, and also she was interested in EDC. So I will ask you first of all, Samantha, if you have anything to report to the commission.
The EDC meetings haven't really had anything focused on, anything to do with the Conservation Committee, so nothing to report there. For planning and zoning, they have two different proposals going that could potentially impact, you know, our commission pertaining to, I think it's Victoria Drive and then the other one was. But basically, they want to do like a mixed-use sports facility back on Victoria Drive. They seem to be doing some good work with the Inland Wetlands Commission to make sure that they're not impacting the land as much as possible, which as far as I can tell, makes perfect sense. The other one is, of course, I closed the agenda that I had opened for it, but let's see, the other one is for a mixed-use design district on Route 25. And that one also is still like, it's still in the, I don't know, like it doesn't seem like they've gotten to the point where they're really talking about like anything having to do with the impact on the environment. So I think at this point, I'm watching it. I don't think it's really anything we can really opine on at this point.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Samantha? Do we have anything from finance or the Town Council?
This is Ryan. The Town Council, the last two meetings, there was nothing that would affect conservation.
Okay. And inland wetland, I have been sporadically, unfortunately have not been listening to the full meeting of every meeting, and I can just briefly talk later on under land use on the 64 Cambridge and 4 Independence Drive. But they do, they are, as you're right Samantha, they're all looking at the, also this Victoria, the expansion of the sports complex. I wasn't in on the entire discussion there, but we may want to keep our eyes open for that one, so. Any other board or commission reports? Okay, now to a big one. Barbara, POCD review committee.
Right, so that was the shortest meeting ever. It was a couple of weeks ago, and there was basically, there was no public participation. And they kind of just basically said, you know, they took out to approve the POCD, you know, as it was drafted. And Francisco did say if there was, you know, minor language changes that really didn't affect any substance to the POCD, they could pass it and still make any changes, but I think it just went through. I don't think anybody had anything to change. So I think it was all of about 15 minutes.
I'm going to tell you, I must have phoned in at, it started at 7:18, to hear them saying, "Oh, well, this is good. Thank you, Francisco. We enjoyed having you," and I missed the entire thing. So that's it, but we will get to it. I believe there were no changes, and we will get to this later on when we talk about our open space plan. But the draft that went around on open space, I believe, was approved as is. So that is the part of the plan that we will be working with directly. As for other, the Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee has not met. C-TAC meets on the third Monday of June, so nothing new there. And Barbara, anything new on sustainable CT or sustainable Fairfield County?
No, I don't have anything from them.
Alrighty. Are there any other updates that anyone else would like to bring up? If not, we will go right on to the land use applications. The first one being the Inland Wetland Commission has before it a remediation plan, a re-generation of the water at, of the wetlands at 64 Cambridge and 4 Independence. They talked about it last night. Unfortunately, I was only in and out of this, part on the phone and part on an iPad. But I think they have more information that they want and that is needed. And the only, I think pertinent, and maybe someone else here would know, my understanding is that the developer, which is Arnold Karp and Kevin Solly, his engineer, will not put forward a proposal to P&amp;Z until they have approval from inland wetlands. I was originally, under the, I guess, assumption that they would go to P&amp;Z, but if I heard correctly, they said last night that they would not, but I can't say that in all certainty, since, like I said, I did not hear the entire discussion. Have any of you heard anything more about this application?
No, I haven't heard anything.
No, I haven't either.
Alrighty, well, that's one. And then Samantha, if you will just keep tabs on the other ones, now this Victoria Drive and the other, the mixed-use on Route 25, that would be great. I did send along, because Rick Schultz had sent this to us just basically for our information. And this is an over 10-year-old approved subdivision on Cottage Street. And the actual address is 82 Cottage and 42 Sandbar. It's at least 10 years old. And I'm trying to see if I have, I know I had some information on it.
It's like 15 years old, the original approval.
Yes, and you tried to look into that, Samantha.
Yes, I actually, with your help, had some success with getting, well, it was actually hard to dig something up because the original approval for the variance was in May 2006. So it was actually like 15 years ago. And, but basically, like it's, it seems like there's a lot still open. They need to blast. They haven't got, provided any blasting bonds paperwork. They have, they're doing, they want to do a subdivision. They haven't provided paperwork on that. So I'm not sure how much further this is really going to go. But the open space, they're, it's basically a few different parcels, right? They've got, they want to do 14 residential lots, two open space parcels, which they're, which is the 69 acres that you had mentioned in your email. And then there's another smaller parcel for 1.3 acres that haven't, these haven't been conveyed yet. And then there's another road parcel, but there's a lot of work to be done, you know, with septic, water supply wells aren't sufficient, so. But there, but the thing with the property that they are, that they want to convey is it does, but Web Mountain and the rails, the rail system that's up there. So I think that's why it looks really attractive to the town. But yeah, so it doesn't seem like anything was really happening. I mean, there isn't anything new that has come about from what we can see. So it's just something to kind of keep an eye on, see if any, you know, new work is going to be done on this property.
No, and thank you so much for digging into that and keeping on top of it. 15 years, and Ryan, you're probably a little more familiar with this. It had like a 10-year, whatever they call it, it had, work had to be done within 10 years. And then they were, then the developer was given like a two-year extension, both inland, wetland, and P&amp;Z. Then we had the COVID, where they had allowed, I don't, one, two, an extension on these approvals, which takes them up, I believe, to like next year, so the fall of 2022. But as you said, Samantha, there is a lot of work, I mean, if anyone is familiar, and we want to take a drive, I live in what's called Stevenson, but not behind the post office, and I live on Bagburn and Old Door. But that's considered the Stevenson area. These are very, I called it Billy Goat, if we lived here, Billy Goat Mountain, you know. There's a, I think it would be tough to develop, and it's like, Samantha, isn't it like a 14-lot subdivision or something?
Yeah, they had to get special approval to get 14 lots, which they received. But yeah, it's going to be a pretty big subdivision.
A difficult land, a large subdivision, but they want to give the town 60 acres of land, which is adjacent to Web Mountain, which is very appealing. And that's really the main reason it was sent to us, just to let us know that it would be donated as open space. And I do believe that, and maybe Barbara, Ryan, when we were, you can kind of refresh my memory, when we were drafting our open space plan, which is still a draft, putting it together, we did look at Stevenson and some of those areas there and adjacent. And one of our criteria was land that is adjacent to existing park property or as existing open space should be considered, so.
Right, I think there's a parcel of property up there, right next to Web Mountain, right? That was for sale or something. Was it last year?
Yeah.
Maybe it might be 18 months ago.
All right, I'm good. It was a, it was a small, I think it was a small parcel, but yeah. But bottom line, this is definitely something we should keep an eye on, and I thank you, Samantha, for tracking it down and, you know, definitely keeping us on top of it, not just the development, not just the donation of open space, but also on the development. And I think there is a lot that I can't, it doesn't, you know, I'm not an engineer, but it certainly, if you just drive up there, it doesn't look like easy land on which to build. So this is definitely one that we have to keep on our radar. Oops, I'm having trouble, like you, Ryan. I turned off this mute, and probably everybody's happy, but. Any other land use applications that we should be following? Did you mention one, Barbara, early on, on the plantings, or is that all?
I think that one's done. I don't remember which one it was. Yeah, again, you know, we never hear, like, if they even read our letter. So that's why we need the policy or the regulation. Yeah, I looked at it quickly, the what's up, just the applications currently, and I didn't see anything that really stuck out.
Okay. Now we're going down to some old business. And the first thing on there is the commission's monthly email news. And at this point in time, I would like to once again thank Kat for all of her help and nudging.
I tried. I tried.
But to let you know.
I didn't realize I was going to get such pushback on it, to be honest.
Anyway, Kat was very good. As you probably all are aware, the first one went through on recycling, and the First Selectman did, it went through Kat, and the First Selectman approved it with a change, with a, you know, wording change, a clarification. And then our second one there, and we realized it wasn't budget time when we wanted it for Earth Day, but it just.
Didn't work out.
It didn't go. And like I said, I don't, the last thing I want to do is kind of put Kat in the middle of this. So we did submit it to Bill Bittar and the Monroe Sun. And this is the one on planting of a pollinator garden. And I think to kind of take the burden off of the Town Hall again, I don't know, you know, as much as, I would love it to go through under the First Selectman's email list. I don't want to put the burden, any larger burden on him or on you, Kat, who has nudged him on numerous occasions on this last one. So I think we will stick with the commission's approval with giving it to the Monroe Sun, whether it be on a monthly basis or every six weeks. And then Barbara, maybe you can kind of, we had another idea of right tree, right place. We had another one on fertilization. Barbara, what was your suggestion for the next one?
I think we were going to do one on, yeah, like fertilizer, you know, like testing your soil prior to putting fertilizers down, what fertilizers can do if they run off into water. So I did start that one. I haven't finished it, so I will.
Ryan and Samantha, does that sound like a good topic to you?
Sure.
Definitely.
Alrighty, Barbara, if you don't mind doing that, you know, sending it around, so we can all see it first, and then we will send it through to Bill Bittar. You know, Ryan, I know you, and I'm sucking on a cough drop, so I don't cough in you at all, you. You did suggest the Board of Ed, but I mean, that was, that too, Kat, I mean, Kat, you had, that was Teresa, if I'm not mistaken. You know, I think it's just as easy. I don't know what the, how many people actually get copies of the Monroe Sun, but I think a lot of them do. A lot of townspeople.
Yeah, and he usually posts stuff online as well and on Facebook.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think he has a pretty good following on Facebook. That's probably just as effective as, and probably less people just deleting mass emails are probably more likely to read it if they see something that interests them.
Okay, that's good to know. And he was very willing and very, you know, he didn't quite run it verbatim, but he, I thought he did a good job. And Barbara, since you were author, what did you think? I thought he did a good job.
Yeah, I have to read it again. I thought it was fine. I didn't see anything.
Okay. So if that's all right with everyone, Barbara will draft something, send it around, use the fertilizers, and, you know, unless there's major objections, then we'll send it over to Bill Bittar. Any other old business? Okay, guys, now to the big stuff, now to the, which, not too long, because I promised Kat it would not be an awfully long meeting, but. And I think we will discuss a couple of things. One of the things that, the two issues on there that we, because we don't have input from Rec, we're going to discuss amongst ourselves, but not finalize tonight. But the first item on the agenda is our budget of this year. And maybe we can easily, there's two things I really, you know, wanted to talk about that we have done in the past. The first is, the second item on the agenda, which is the Connecticut Land Conservation Coalition Annual Conference. I sent, I sent all of you the links to it. It's, because it's all virtual, it's literally five noon hour sessions, which isn't bad, but highly directed, they're almost completely focused to land trust. And Barbara, don't take this the wrong way, not that, you know, we're not, you know, the land trust is a great thing. But if any of you are interested in going, it's like I said, it's only $25, but attending, any of the, all of them or any of them, I think we have the money in our budget to do so, so I'm going to open it up to the rest of you. There's one, the one that I thought was interesting, I don't know how much we would focus exactly on Monroe, but it's very pertinent, is there's one on climate change. But I'll let there, if the rest of you have looked at it, let me tell, tell me your thoughts and see if you're interested in joining in.
So this is Barbara. I just can't do that because of what I do with Parks and Rec. I'm outside all day. And there, I think it's Tuesdays and Thursdays they're doing it. So time-wise, it just doesn't work for me.
I'm going, I'm trying to look for the, I have taken it down and see, you know, I think they probably are Tuesdays and Thursdays, like what, from 12 to 1:30?
Yeah, yeah, it's June 8, 10, 15, and 17, from noon to 1:30.
Oops, any takers from Ryan or Samantha? There's four different, are you interested, Samantha?
I'm not sure if like with my work schedule, I'll check my.
Yeah, and I think it was difficult with my schedule that was coming up.
Well, if you could, if you could let me, definitely let me know by, so we can, I believe, obviously, they're June 8th. We would have to register ASAP. And to get the invoice and everything through the town, like I said, we do have money that was in our budget that was approved for this, for the CLCC conferences, conference. But if you think you're, you know, I'm willing to entertain a motion if you think you might be able to do it, you know, contingent on your, you know, it is, it's a, it is a tough time when they have four, you know, noonday sessions. And the reason that I'm pushing this now, and I didn't really, I just got, I think the registration just opened up last week. We cannot pay for it ourselves and then get reimbursed by the town. That's just not how the finance department works. They have been very good in the past about submitting, paying for our members. And I believe Cynthia and Barbara, you actually went when it was a day-long Saturday session a couple of times.
Right, yes.
But I'm, I would, I would love it if people are interested in going to put this through. But we don't have a whole lot of luxury, time-wise, if you're unsure. So if any of you actually think you might, could do it, I guess maybe I'm, I'm not looking at you, but I am looking at you, Samantha. If you think it's a possibility, we can run it through and put it through and approve it tonight. And then I guess if it turns out that you cannot do it, then we'll just ask that the payment not be sent. Kat, does that sound like, make sense to you? Say it again? If we, I mean, it's not a tremendous expense, but if we approved sending one of our, paying for one of our members to attend these virtual sessions, if we did that, approved it, and I put the paperwork through, because like I said, it starts on, it's in June. Put the paperwork through, and if it ends up that Samantha can't do it, can we just tell them to stop it and not?
I'm not sure.
Well, I should be able to commit to at least one session. So I mean, I'll check my calendar tonight, and I'll get back to Karen to see like which ones make the most sense. And, you know, I know, like just looking at the, I'm looking at the site now, and the first one on June 8th is probably, you know, it's more general, but it's definitely something that I know would benefit my knowledge base, and I think.
Good.
In general, like it talks about attracting more people to the board, and it talks about, you know, community relationships and trying to get people to be more involved and more inclusive and things like that. So it seems like right up our alley as far as what we would be wanting to do with committee. So that's the one I'm looking at, that I think I would, if I could go to any, I would, I would pick that one.
Alrighty, so do we have, I'm willing to entertain a motion that our 2020, 2021 budget and allocation, I believe it's of $25, be sent to the CLCC for one person to attend this year's annual virtual session. this year's annual session, virtual session.
I'll move.
Okay, move Ryan, is there a second?
I'll second, it's Barbara.
Okay. Alrighty, all, all in favor? Let's go, Thomas?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
Vanessa 4-0, okay, I will get the proper paperwork and I'll send it through Finance. And I, I think that's good, I think, you know, it, we could, I will have to tell you, I think I ended up doing the virtual one, the all day one last fall, and parts of it were excellent. That was too long to do a virtual one, it was literally like from nine to four. And with, with breaks in between, but the, the sessions were quite good, and I think Barbara, you might also agree to the fact that, I mean, they may not all be perfect, but they have, they have good presenters.
Oh, they, they, no, they've always been really good, it is, I think a lot easier when you do it, especially, well, all day in person, because you're able to talk to people, move around, I mean, it's just much better than sitting through, but the presentations have all been very good. And they usually have a good, you know, velvet, well, the, the all day ones, they had a keynote speaker who was always very good, so, you know, they were well run.
Okay, very good, I'll send it around, you've got the information Samantha. And I will go back on their website and see if we can, you know, sign you up and, and I will, I think we have the option of, and I'll just tell them that we will, the payment will be submitted through the town of Monroe, so, sounds good, alrighty. That's done. Now, let's go on Barbara, to the one thing that, that I had hoped we would have some finalization for tonight, but I don't know if we do, but we could, this is a place where we can have comments on it and also decide how we move forward. And that is, and a budget, expending some of our funds to go in with Trumbull on the printing of generic brochures on pollinator pathway, and creating a pollinator pathway and also pesticides. So here on Barbara.
Great, okay, so yeah, well, it was just two weeks ago today, actually, they started this, that Marielle Lemay, Chairperson for Trumbull Conservation Commission, and had sent something out. And she's also heads up their pollinator pathway effort. So she just said, you know, sent to a few people saying, why don't we go in and get generic, I think a lot of towns, some towns have done ones that's specific to their town, so obviously this would just be one that didn't say any particular town, but the, just talking about the pollinator pathway, what it is, how to get involved and things like that, and they were gonna, you know, the thought was order a thousand of them and, you know, different towns would go in on it and, you know, we, obviously the cost would be lower probably because of the volume, so, but I haven't heard anything since, everybody that she sent it to said, yay, that's a great idea. And then it seemed to have, yes, no one's gone back to it, and I did ask, you know, if there was any additional information, you know, and they haven't responded, so I can try again, but I, you know, to get ahold of them, the only other thought is, I can get told, ahold of the pollinator pathway directly and just ask for a copy of the, the generic brochure, and I actually not sure what the pesticide, pesticide brochures and, and shop it around and just see if I can get, you know, what prices would be for, I don't know, 500, I don't know what the number would be for us, and, you know, get a, get something for the June meeting, but unless they get back quickly, I, I haven't heard, you know, I haven't heard anybody's doing anything on it for the, the group. So.
Well, if we would like, if we want to use money in this fiscal year's budget, we need to approve it by June.
Right, no, I know, yeah, so.
And we also would need, as I said, it would be, we need, we need to know how much for what we're getting, how much, and who to, you know, ask Finance to send the check to. So I'm, I'm willing, I, I think it would be good, I think we can put them, you know, in the library, we've had Samantha, I mean Barbara and another member of the commission have had workshops at, through the library, the programs at the library, and I think now that things are coming back where, you know, the library is open at least for extended hours, not full time yet, but extended hours. There may be programs coming up and definitely in the fall or whatnot, that these brochures would be good to have, not only for the library, I mean, I, I think we tried to put things in the past, like at the farmers market, that hopefully will come back. And it was, it was open last year, but even more active, I think some of the people who go to the farmers market would be interested in the pollinator garden or, you know, pesticide brochure, so I'm, I'm definitely willing to entertain the expenditure of our funds on those brochures, but we need a price, we need a commodity, and we need to know who, who will be doing this and who will, who, who, who we will be paying. So Samantha, Ryan, your thoughts?
It's Ryan, it's, it's okay with me depending on price, but yeah, I don't have an issue with any of it really.
I mean, I think it makes sense, we have to use the money on something, and it seems like a good, a good one, so.
Okay, so Barbara, if you're willing to either shop it or, you know, to bug Mary, and by the way, if you don't know, Marielle Lemay is a Chair of the Trumbull Conservation Commission, and she's also very active in the land trust, Aspetuck Land Trust, and very active at least in the pollinator garden circle of people. So if you could, if you're, if you're willing to do it Barbara, please do, and just know for a fact that the, the June 10th meeting is, is the deadline.
Okay.
Okay. Now we got two other big items and then, let's see how we're doing. Oh, we've only been, we've got, it's only 7:09, so we're doing okay. The, we have, we have sent to Rick Schultz, Town Planner, a draft regulation for Riparian Buffer Zone, and also for a use of the right tree, a native plant, use of native plant regulation for P and Z. And I guess, let's, let's start with the regional plant Barbara, because you've been working on that with Newtown and talking with other local towns on this. And I, he, I think, and I'll let you go, he, he is not available, he wasn't available, he's out of town, I believe he was leaving tonight. And because he's been, they've been really short staffed in the planning and zoning department, I don't think, we've not had in, received input back from him. So before we actually sent a formal request for either one of these regulations or, and I'll say it, a formal draft to P and Z, we would like, I would like his input, my personal opinion. So Barbara, why don't you talk a bit about the, the, the regional efforts to promote this use of native plants?
Okay, so I just started talking to Holly Cosette in, who's the Newtown Conservation Commission Chairperson, like a year ago, just took us a while to actually put something together, and so there, there are a number of town cities throughout the country that are doing things on requiring native plants, the percentages vary greatly. But Holly and I started talking about it, and finally I, I wrote the, the regulation. Holly put together lots of lists so that we made it easy for people to be able to look at what are native plants for various sites, growing conditions. And, and we did speak with the, we were on the agenda for the Native Plant Working Group, which is a whole bunch of different people. Some people with UConn and Connecticut DOT, and there's a lot of people on that one. And so everybody thinks it's great, you know, good idea, and I was speaking to somebody in Ridgefield who was on board, and I haven't heard from her in a while, so anyways, Holly and I continued to talk about it and move forward, and she's had the opportunity to talk to her, I think she says the Deputy Director of Planning and Zoning, who, you know, basically said, sounded good, and he said, you know, for doing something for like town plantings by the municipality. He didn't say any issues with that, I guess everybody's concern is more get, you know, putting something, saying developers have to put in a certain percent of native plants. You know, there's, there's just some concern about that one. But, you know, so we're ready to move forward and get some feedback from Rick, but as Karen said, we just haven't had the, the chance to do it. But, you know, one of the, besides all the ecological reasons to do it, I don't think it's a big issue because it's really become something that, like Planters Choice, which is one of the big wholesale, they're up in Newtown, Monroe uses them for plantings, and they put in a whole new area, and they're huge, and they put in a whole new area that's all native plants, because they said so many homeowners who, their landscapers go there, and then also municipalities are wanting to use native plants, so they are seeing that need, and there are a number of nurseries that are really going either full native or very close to it. So it's, it's definitely a, a direction things are going, and and even, you know, as I look at all these applications that come in, local plant lists, sometimes they're terrible. That senior development on Main Street, I think they had a terrible list of plants, but some are, you know, heavily native, so it's really not a burden, that's kind of my point, if anybody wants to push back on the commercials, you know, asking developers to do this, it's really, really not a burden, and there's a number of developments that, you know, that use substantially native plants, in fact, I was sitting on one of the calls, it had to be April, Inland Wetlands, I don't remember when it was exactly, but there was, there's a, it's, it's an existing Monroe business, and it's over on Fan Hill, I think. And they make concrete stuff, I'm not sure exactly what they do, but as they put it up on the screen, it was a virtual meeting, but the the application up on the screen, I could see the plant list, it was 100% native plants, so it's very doable. It's not a big effort, landscape architects know this stuff, and, you know, I don't see why it should be a problem, I can see, you know, if we don't go with 100%, but, you know, close to it would be, would be important. And my other thought is that if we get pushed back from, eventually when we talk to Rick and then maybe eventually with P and Z, if they get pushed back because they're a little concerned about telling developers that they have to do this, I would go with maybe a lesser percentage to start, and, but then want to put in the regulation that it has to present to increasing native plantings goes up every year over two, three, four, whatever it is, you know, a certain number of years goes up so that we eventually get to the point where it's, hopefully it's 100%. Because again, they're easy to get ahold of, you know, that, that might be one of the, the concerns, and there's no reason that you can't find the right native plant for any particular location, so. But that's where it is, but Newtown, they've had a little bit more success just the P and Z at this point, just because she's been able to get to, to talk to people.
Well, well, thank you, I'm gonna ask Ryan and Samantha what they think, and then also just add your comments. I really would like to wait for Rick, I don't know how long it will be before we get another, a town planner, this is a replacement for Will. Do you, Barbara, do you feel it's, we should move forward right now, or, you know, what do you think, what is the time, timeframe?
I, I don't know why we, I don't, I honestly, I just don't know the flow here, I'm, you know, having not been really involved. I mean, we talk about different things and applications and stuff, but, you know, going in and saying we'd like this as a regulation, I don't know how that works, so I don't know if we can't just skip ahead to P and Z and explain what we're trying to do and why. Again, you tell me, I'm not sure how that works, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Well, yeah, we have two regulations, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, once again, I, I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but Ryan, you've done P and Z work in a lot of towns, you know, zoning matters. What do you think? Should we wait for Rick? Can, we have this, we have the use of native plant regulation we would like to put forward, and then also this Riparian buffer, which I might be a heavier lift depending.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the benefit, I, I mean, I, I don't have a problem going forward, I think the only, the benefit of waiting for Rick's input is he's gonna be able to tell us if there's gonna be any issue with it, and if there's anything we need to modify or change or tweak a little bit to, to increase the likelihood of it, you know, being, I guess, approved. But I, I mean, I don't, just looking, I don't think there's a problem with it, I would just wonder if getting like Rick's lesson, so to speak, at a time would be helpful.
I'll let you go Samantha, but that was, that was my thought, is to go, is to run it by Rick first and see if he sees anything glaring, you know.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, looking at it, like from a, looking at it from like a lawyer's eyes, I don't see anything wrong with it, but it is always helpful to get his input since he's more on the inside as to what people might think.
Okay. I know you had a chance to read it, and we, and we, and just, just so you know, Ryan, Barbara and Samantha and I were at this everyday ceremony. And we just kind of, kind of, I, I'm always kind of in awe of Barbara, because I, you know, this, this tree looks pretty, you know, its plant looks nice, you know, I don't don't exactly know why, you know, you put it there, but you know, and I def, I absolutely rely on her knowledge on, you know, native plants and whatnot. But Samantha, what's, what's your, you know, I, I look at, I was looking at this just more procedurally, and I, like I said, I, I I would, I would like to have Rick's input, but I, I have to say this, and, and just probably general comments. He is basically doing several jobs, I mean, he was doing, you know, there is no, you know, planning administrator, there was, there, we are getting a new clerk, I, I don't, you know, I'm hope, hopeful that she will have, you know, knowledge of, you know, planning knowledge, but
She does have planning and zoning knowledge.
Good, okay, well, that's, that's good to know, but we have relied in the past on Rick and on Will for input, and I found it valuable. Samantha, as an outsider looking at this process, what do you think? Not an outsider, but someone new to this, you're an, definitely an insider.
No, I mean, I think that all of your comments make sense, you know, like I don't think, like looking at it and reading it, I, you know, and hearing what Barbara has been saying, it sounds great, and it would be great to move it forward, I just don't want to push something forward and have this negative, like have, have like it get approved or just like not approved for something silly, because we didn't have somebody just do a quick, like light touch glance over the thing, so. Yeah, I mean, I'm with you guys in saying maybe it'd be nice just to have them do a very quick peek, you know, at, at what Barbara's put together.
Okay, Barbara, I think that, I think that's, I think that's the way to go, I mean, we've been around, I've been around a long time, and I guarantee you that if there's one thing in it that somebody doesn't like, or that's a real sticking point, they won't, you know, you're not gonna get past, it could be 90 or 99% wonderful, but they'll find this one little thing that they don't like, and, you know, make us, make us stink over it. But, so I think, okay, well, we will wait on that with Rick, and also just my, my two cents, and I'd like to hear from, from the rest of you, is I think this native plant one will be easier, will be an easier lift than the Riparian Buffer. And I'm wondering if we should start with that, or do we start with a tougher one and then say, you know, which we also, I think, need Rick's two cents on, so. Barbara, why, okay, I, I'm, I think we, we like this, right, Barbara, thank you so much for writing, we like this Riparian, not Riparian, the native tree, use of native trees. I agree with you, we'll start with a higher percentage if they give us grief, we can, we can always lower it, and as you said, or start with a lower one with incremental increases over X amount of years, whatever that be, but I think that, I think it's, it's great, and I think you did a wonderful job, and if we can, I'll still try to nudge Rick next week and next week or so, so we have some final decision by our, by our next meeting, and we can say officially the Board has voted on it and on this draft and submitting it to P and Z. So now give, give us what you think about your, your background on the Riparian Buffer, Barbara.
Well, that was a response to a P and Z meeting a couple of months ago now, right? I don't remember when it was, when they had a very short, like it was one or two sentences about riparian buffers and I can't remember what it was, but, and then, and you had said to Rick, well, we should, you know, we should do this and we should put something together. And, and then I kind of launched into reading everything, everything I could find about riparian buffers. But so they, I don't know if we ever really got a good answer on who started that.
It was initiated by P and Z and, or at least one or two members of P and Z. I believe one of them was the chairman, Michael O'Reilly, and it was initiated by P and Z. And to be very, you're being very nice. I will be more blunt. It kind of blew me away when they, when they kind of automatically, and we heard about it like the day, if it was a meeting like on Friday, that this was on the agenda and we might, we might want to come. We might be, we, the Conservation Commission might be interested. And then, and, and they literally turned the floor over to us and said, well, what is it? Do you have it? Basically expecting us to have, have written one. So I think they kind of walked that back a little bit. We did say we would, we would be very happy to work with them. So go into, go into it a little more, Barbara.
Into what the buffer is? Or, yeah, well, it's, it's, it's literally a, well, we spoke with Loz about it, Loz in inland wetlands. And I think she, she referred to as a hands-off. It's literally a, a certain distance from a water body, whether it's a stream or wetlands or whatever, that, you know, would not be touched. I mean, you know, people can walk in there. I mean, you can go see the water, whatever, you know, within reason. But it wouldn't be built on in that it would need to be left either as is natural, or if there's invasive plants and things like that, that would be removed. And then, you know, they should create some sort of buffer because it's, it's a, basically it's all a filter for the, for the water, whatever, again, streams or wetlands. And I know Samantha, you got involved in this one. I think you said something about with your house where people had just, you know, like basically mowed everything down, down to the edge of the water. And that really, you know, so our regulations in there that, that cannot be done. Because there's, you know, for erosion purposes, for just things that flow out of your yard, whether it's fertilizers or, you know, whatever, into the water and pollute the water. So there, you know, very good reasons to have the buffer. But it's more a matter of what, how, I guess, how wide it is and, and we went with a pretty wide buffer, but kind of in stages so that, you know, real close to water is a no touch. And then there's, you know, you can do a little bit more, a little further away. But that's, and these are pretty standard. There's lots, there's tons of information out there on riparian buffers. And some are huge, you know, some, some towns in, Karen, you and I spoke about at some point, there were some that had, you know, like many, many feet, you know, hundreds of feet away from the edges of water. It depends on whether it's a reservoir or, you know, I mean, obviously the, the use of the waters. It, you know, has some impact on the width of the buffer. So, but I do think that's going to be the, the bigger debate is, you know, how, how big should that be? I think the native planting is, you know, not a big deal at all.
Well, maybe if we couple, and by the way Samantha, at the last meeting when we talked about this riparian buffer regulation, you know, when you brought up residential, the, I, the, the latest draft that Barbara has, or he did, is only for commercial or renovation work in a commercial zone. Because isn't it, it is true that the, in residential, that's covered by inland wetland. Is that correct, Barbara?
Yeah, I think so. Cause they have those, you know, remediation things all the time. Almost every agenda I see has, somebody has to do some remediation because they did, you know, just remove all vegetation down to the edge of a water or built in, you know, too close or, you know, put a shed in or something.
So in order to, I mean, to a way, because Samantha, you picked that out right away. In the, the latest draft, and Barbara, I believe you sent it around, there, there was a qualification and I'm going to read it now. Upon a change in land use or for additional development not previously approved on a commercial or industrial parcel, the new regulation would apply. And to be honest, what, what the Planning and Zoning Commission, or at least Michael O'Reilly had wanted, was he, he really, he, he came out and said the Paquonic River. And that's what he wanted, the Paquonic River buffer. And that is because there's a, there's a lot of concern and problems along Route 25 on the commercial zone with septic systems and whatnot behind these buildings. But I really, it, it, it seemed definitely a better way to go by just calling it a riparian buffer. So, but I, I, I'm tending to think that we need Rick's even more so than ever. We'd like Rick Schultz's comments on this before we officially put it to P and Z. And maybe what I will say is that we will be voting in, at our June meeting in both of these to send the, a draft to P and Z or the reg, maybe not even the whole commission, to the Regulations Committee, the Regulations Review Commission, Committee Subcommittee. And that we would like his input before it goes. So, because he, he, he attends those meetings regularly. So are there any, any, any other, because I do have one, I, I know you guys, I'm keeping you late, but there's, there's one other item I really wanted to discuss tonight. A couple, but any other input from any of you on the, either the buffer regulation or the use of native plants?
Nothing for Ryan.
You love what?
No, I said nothing. I said nothing for me.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that change makes sense and I, I, I feel comfortable with both of them.
Okay. Thanks very much. The, the one big item and the other, the other, I put one item on and I, and it's my error for switching pages on this agenda too quickly, but I just wanted to let you, give you, it's an FYI that I put on, on this construction of fields at Wolf Park. Yes, I think I got calls from Parks and Recreation Commission members and one from a resident. And I believe Barbara did also from, and one of them is Cynthia Jean Casper, who's a former Conservation Commission member who now sits on Parks and Rec. That, and not, not in, in opposition to the building of the field, that in the, in a park master plan, there is the building of new fields. I'm going to say if in, in the, in Wolf Park, behind the existing like football field and baseball fields. And the concern that residents and park commissioners had was the access and the construction, where construction equipment would go. And I believe one of the access routes considered was through Parkview, the road. The other through Farm View and there may have been one, not for certain, off of like Sleepy Hollow off of Pretty Hill. So that what they would, what this construction equipment would do, or construction would go through residential neighborhoods, cut through the park and that's how the fields would be, would be, would be built. The main concern was what it would do to those neighborhoods, not, not anything against the fields. And there was a lot of brouhaha and whether, one of the signs off of Farm View said it was conservation. There was a sign because they had, they used federal monies for the building of Wolf Park. And the sign said like conservation land and water. And it came to us as what was the role of the Conservation Commission in, with these fields? And so I looked into it. Rick was going to look into whatever the subdivision approval was on Parkview, look for the grant application and what could be done? Could, could there actually be construction equipment in the, in the key, I'm sorry, the key was to a temporary entrance for temporary use. Bottom line, it was, I guess, I was not invited, was not part of the meeting, but I believe the commission, there was a three-person group in the town that put forward a proposal and I believe it was to come through Farm View and then build up these fields. And I believe the commission, after discussions, discussing it, and the, and the actual vote was to be to hire a consulting firm, TPA, that had done a lot of plans for the park, to come up with a plan for the fields and a schedule of work, but with not, and the, the final decision was that they would not go through residential neighborhoods or disrupt residential neighborhoods to construct the fields. So if the, the latest I have heard is these fields, in order to construct the fields, they will be going through the park. They will be going down the driveway next to the basketball court, behind the old kids' creation playground and then into that area. That is what the Conservation Commission voted on. But just in case you hear anything about it, this was really outside of our purview. But there was a lot of, there was a lot of concern and I believe those plans are going to the council. Now Kat, you're going to have to, is that true?
Not that I heard of, no.
Okay. But that's Barbara, do you have anything else to add? You're glad, I'm sorry Kat.
It might have not, you know, come across the FS office yet.
Okay. Barbara, what, did you have anything else to add?
Uh, no. I haven't heard anything, you know, further about it.
Okay. I don't know if you have. I know Ryan, I, I think, I, I, I'm not for certain, but I think they're a multi-use field.
Yeah, well, I was, I was at, I think, one of the early hearings on a different thing and they started discussing it and bringing up the option of going through Parkview or Farmview. And I, my recollection is somebody said something about wetlands or conservation land that they wanted to be careful about disturbing anything like that going through back there. But yeah, multi-use, I think it's going to be a multi-use grass. I forget who spoke from the town, but it's a grass field used for primarily, I think, football, soccer and lacrosse. So it's going to take a couple of years, even after they build it for the grass to fully grow in. So it's usable. So. But they were talking about concerns about making sure they protected that area back there, which I think the town, they said the town had an easement to go through there if they needed to. But there was concerns expressed to make sure it was done in, I guess, the least intrusive manner. So, but I was at that initial meeting where they talked about it.
Thank you. So very nice. I think that's, that was the least intrusive manner because their manner. I think that there were concerns definitely in off Parkview because of the wetlands. And they were going to look at the, not going to the subdivision approval for those homes, but also inland wetland approval. So, good. All righty, that, that, this was, that was just an FYI. Now to one more other, okay, oh geez. One more thing that I really would like to bring up and we kind of have a lot on, on our plates right now. And is the, it's under old business, was the development of an open space plan, which we are doing. And I just, what I sent you earlier today, and I'm very sorry I didn't send it earlier. But I, 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 I sent, Barbara had sent it off and this was a draft that was voted on, that was for public view at the P O C D public hearing that was approved definitely without any changes. And I just wanted to, to bring to your attention a couple of things. In the draft, our, our plan, which I think is like a February plan, I'm looking at, yes, it's the February 9th plan is the late, our, our latest draft of an open space plan. But now that the P O C D is complete, I guess the final approval date is, was May 7th. It has gone to OPM and the final approval date is 7th. We have to start looking at then adding our, submitting our plan to P and Z, our open space plan, and that would be then included as an addendum to the P O C D. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention. One is if you're looking at the, the draft of the, the open space information I sent. On the first page, our numbers of open space will be the same as what's listed in the P O C D. Barbara, I think we've got to, we've got to have a drop dead date and land number somewhere. And I, so I think we're going to be comfortable in using the number of acres in the split that is included in the P O C D. When it comes to areas of desirable areas for preservation, we will take out, we had those, we had areas listed. We literally had properties listed. We had street addresses and properties listed. We will go with the map that's in the P O C, P O C D, that literally has the red circles drawn around certain areas. But then I think it's very important just to, to note that on their environmental resource, resources goal, one of the things in the plan that was approved basically says that they, that the Planning and Zoning Commission, they will support the recommendations of the town's open space plan. And so as to expand and effectively manage and maintain town-owned open space. So we do have to look at this management plan. If you go on further, their strategies, they, they, the Planning and Zoning Commission in the P O C D said they, we should work with the open space Preservation and Acquisition Committee to identify critical improvements and maintenance needed on town-owned open space properties and produce a summary of those. And also that we should work with the Southwest Conservation District to develop how best to address and pursue implementation of the recommendations in the Paquonic River Watership Plan. So they, they also said that we should work with the MetroCog to, they, we, we as a Conservation Commission, with the MetroCog to look at funding grants. So we've got quite a bit to do and I, my concern has been for the last month or two on this management plan. And Barbara and I briefly spoke, and I think you might've been there too Samantha, with Monsieur Rose, Director of Parks and Rec in Monroe at this Arbor Day Ceremony. And I asked if they, if she could share with us their management plan to how they, what, how they manage the, the fields and the open space, because they do the work at like Web Mountain and not just, not just, not just the active recreation at Wolf Park and Great Hollow. And she basically said that they really didn't have one. So that things have been done over the years of the course of many, many, many years and that's just how they're done. So I guess my, my question and I'm, and I don't know if you will know anymore, how we will go about developing an open space, a, a management plan. Our neighboring towns in Newtown, I believe, and in Shelton have literally hired someone. They've, they've done the, when the Yale School of Forestry has helped, but it's very, they have done very detailed plans of specific parcels. And, you know, I don't know. You know, I don't know if we can do that. I know, I know we can't do it on our own. But I'm looking for some advice on that and I, and I want that, once again, something I've asked Rick, I had asked Will when he was here. So we've got things to do and I think we worked this month on the regulations and get them going and also on them, keep looking at the, you know, planning and zoning applications. But then I think we have to dig down and look at how we are going to complete some of the tasks that have been approved and that are included and have been approved in the P O C D. So. I don't know, Barbara, Ryan, Samantha, any, any comments on your thoughts on how to best move forward?
This is Barbara. I'd like to see, you know, what other towns do. I haven't seen any. I haven't looked either. But just to see what, you know, what they look like. And I think we need to, you know, realize that we're not going to manage every parcel because we have that list from MetroCog and a lot of them, as we've talked about before, are teeny tiny little, you know, literally tiny parcels. So we're not going to, you know, try to literally tiny parcels. So we're not going to, you know, try to manage every little tiny parcel. And then I think it comes down to what, you know, what parcels do they manage? So it's got to, we've got to be a big interaction with Missy to talk about that because of the, you know, they, I, you know, given I work, you know, just the summers, but for Parks and Rec, I know they've got all they can handle. Now we're, you know, additional ball fields coming along. You know, there, there's a tremendous amount to manage at the moment with all municipal properties and the parks. So I guess it's a matter of how much management and, and of what parcels, we're going to have to just, you know, think about the list and, and, you know, and if there's a, you know, a couple acres in the middle of a development, because that was the, the property that was given back by the developer or, you know, just left open by the developer or whatever. I mean, you know, questions are, do we, is that, I know it's open space, but is it, is that something we're probably, you know, we might not manage, the town might not really manage, or, you know, or should they? But, you know, I think we've got to question what we're even trying to accomplish here and, and start looking at parcels and at what point, at what size, you know, would it be considered something that we, that town might even have some interest in looking at for management, just to make sure that no one's building their shed or garage on it or whatever. So I don't know, I think we have to define the whole thing and just what are we trying to accomplish? It would be nice to see what other towns have done.
Samantha, Ryan? Any comments?
I, I agree with Barbara that seeing what other towns have done might be helpful for us to design what we want to do or plan better what we want to do.
Yeah, I agree. And maybe, you know, it might make sense between all of us to try to divide and conquer some parts of this. You know, like, once we get a few good examples, maybe we like kind of divvy up some of the sections and try to like become our own, like, it makes the research a little less onerous because we have to do a lot of work within what the town guides are, guidelines are, but then also what generally you do with the different types of open spaces that we're, we'd be discussing. So.
Yeah, all of that's very good. I, I went on the website, Shelton, I think, has four or five, I, I didn't, four or five management plans for large parcels of property, and they have, they have quite a bit of open space. I believe that's the same for Newtown. They have certain like, I mean, if you go online, you can see it. I went back because our open space plan was kind of modeled after Woodbridge. They had nothing online. I mean, I didn't talk to anybody there on that management plan. So I do think it is. So maybe we can, each of us take one or two towns and see, and maybe, you know, just go back to Shelton, Newtown, I don't know about Trump, Trumbull, and maybe some closer in size to Monroe. Was it like Bethel? And see, each of us take one of those towns and, you know, check online and, and see. Or, or you know what, Barbara, if you're talking to Holly on, you know, the native plant, maybe she would know what they do in Newtown, or Mary Ellen.
Yep, yeah.
And if, and if you are familiar, Ryan, I don't know if you're, you know, you, I know you had, you used to have another one, Trumbull. I don't know if you're familiar with, you know, familiar with what that town is doing. But look at, look at, take, each of us take a couple towns, look at it and come back. Because the ones I did see from, and quickly looked at from Shelton, now, this is for one parcel of property, like 20, 30 pages, and several of them were done by the Yale School of Forestry, came in and did it for them. So I, and I don't know if they were paid or just, you know, certain thing, or they did it, their students did it. But I think it's a, it's a, it's going to be, it's going to be a task. And I think you're right, that we have to, you know, what do we want to accomplish and look at it and see what, what do we want to, what do we want to accomplish and what can we really do? So, and then who's going to do it? So I think that's good. Okay, good discussion. Let's see. Happy Memorial, yes. It's, it's 7:47. It's one of our longer meetings, and I keep on promising Kat, speaking of our next meetings. Kat has been very good about facilitating these meetings. I would be willing, and I, and I, while we have run this on, we will, now we could even, several boards and commissions do meet in person in the town hall. We could do that. I mean, there's only four of us. We don't get a huge crowd. You know, it's not like we're going to hit the 250-person mark. We could. There is, there's, there's pros and cons in both of us. There's a lot of, it's very convenient to meet in these virtual meetings. Like I said, but Kat has been above and beyond in helping us, helping me. We could go to the town hall, or one or two of us go to the town hall and just have our cell phones and, you know, call people. But do you have any preference for the, for the June meeting? I know, and I'm going to, let me turn this to, and Ryan, if you don't know this, we, we, we don't just have four members. We have four and a half members because Samantha is going to give us, give us another member.
Oh, nice.
Who will be born the end of, the end of, the end of July, right?
Yes, yes, I'm due in the end of July.
So I guess what I'm saying is what?
I can do in person. I'm fine with that.
Okay. Barbara?
In person's fine for me.
Maybe we'll try an in-person, and for you, if you want to stay home, or maybe if you want to get away from your two other ones, you can come to the town hall. Now that I know what you look like, I know who you are. And maybe we'll try the next one in person.
Karen, only.
Yeah, I can do the next one in person.
Yeah, the only issue, Karen, I know, I'm not available on the, it's, it would be the 10th next month, right?
Let me see. Yes.
I can't, I'm not available that night, but I was wondering if we could change. I can do a week before, a week, a week after, either one, that's probably fine.
Do, do any of you know in advance what, what, what I can do? I'll tell you what I can do. You think you can do it either the, probably the 17th would be good? That, that's what you're saying? One of the days, Ryan? June 17th? Did I lose you?
No, my mute button was stuck. Sorry. It would not unmute.
On purpose, really? No.
The 17th is fine with me.
What about Samantha, Barbara?
That's fine with me, Barbara.
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay. There would have to be a special meeting. So only what's on the agenda, but we'll have an in-person special meeting on June 17th. And Kat, you've been the saint.
Anytime.
Anytime. So, all righty, now, any other business that needs to come before the commission? If not, does there a motion? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
This is Barbara. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I second it.
Samantha. Okay, all in favor of adjourned? Barbara?
Yes.
Samantha?
Yes.
Ryan? Step on mute. Yes, and Karen, 4-0. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned at 7:51. Thank you all. Happy Memorial Day, and we'll talk with you soon. Thanks.